We'll call the meetings a order. It is seven o'clock. We will start with, um, let's have allegiance. We can all silence our phones. Please join me in standing.
Let us to the flag of the United States of America. In the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lucy, when you're ready, if you call the roll of members.
Um, sorry. Stephanie Tibbetts.
Here.
Frankie Schwartz.
Here.
Deanna Swires.
Here.
Jeff Schneider.
Here.
Rich Barton.
Here.
Carolyn Bragg.
Here.
And Keith Harbison.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Lucy, uh, next item of business is to amend or adopt the agenda. Do we maintain motion?
I'm going to adopt the agenda as presented.
A second. And we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted as presented. We will start off with recognitions.
Yes, uh, we have, uh, three all-state baseball players here tonight. That's a big deal, so congratulations to them. So we only got one here tonight, but we had Austin Haas and Carter Martin, uh, were on the all-state, uh, second team. Uh, but with us here too, we have Colin DeSylvester, and, uh, I had the pleasure of watching him hit a few out of there. I mean, the guy's got some power. It's been fun to watch this season, and baseball's been, been a great, great program, doing a lot of great things. So Colin, if you want to come up here, we'll get a picture with our board president and parents coming up, and, and, uh, we'll recognize you.
Here, try that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
I'm okay.
You good?
Yeah. I'm good if you're good.
You guys are welcome to stay at the Trico's. Thanks for coming. Congratulations. Yeah.
Congratulations, Colin. Congratulations, congratulations. All right. Next is patron comments, and we do have one, um, patron has signed to, um, to present to the board. So, uh, Mr. Dennis Bowles, uh, would like to discuss the possibility of House Bill 461 being included in our three curriculum as baby Olivia. So Dennis, if you could come forward and address the board.
I found out about this baby Olivia probably a year ago. Saw it online. I was getting guys, they were heard of it, but it's put out by an organization called Live Action, a very whole life organization, and trying to fight, um, fighting against abortion every, every way they can. And I saw it, and I kept thinking about it, and I, it talked about the fact that it's legal. This, this has been passed in Tennessee and North Dakota, and I think Kansas. They passed it that every, every school in the state has to have this in their curriculum. And it mentioned that twenty other states are thinking about it. It was originally one of them. And I, I asked, I've been asking Jeff about it for most every Sunday morning for probably six months, and then I was asking him, and he knew anything about it. He didn't know, he didn't know what they, what the curriculum was here. Then when I found out it was going to be passed in the states, I quit bugging Jeff because a lot is going to happen anyway. Uh, what happened, May first, we had a march for lifetimes in Jeff City. And after the march was over, I went into the Capitol and looked up Jeff Myers, who's a state rep, and Ben Ron, who's a state senator. They knew nothing about it. So apparently they're, they're just not pushing it down to Jeff City. Uh, Bailey Christensen, she sponsored this bill. She's from District Two of Northwestern third. Bill exists. I didn't even know it. I just got it today. So the bill exists, and there's no action being taken on it. And my thought is, we don't have to waste the Jeff City bill. We can do it here in Moore County. And lead the way. I mean, I, I know the, uh, president from Red City, Austin Jones, I've been talking to him. Maybe we can, uh, warn him in Red City to push this through. Not really rocket science, just talks about, um, what the kids should be hearing anyway, about their sexuality and, and how they should be conducting themselves as, um, moral, moral teenagers. And then it talks about this, this, uh, two, three and a half minute video that is part of this, this House Bill. And this shows, gave one to the, uh, public on the Monday, if anybody has seen it. But it, it, it shows how conception happens, and what happens, and where the egg goes, and how it's, what happens at, uh, five weeks and eight weeks, and it tells the kids how this egg develops. A lot of these poor people that get abortions, they're just told, it's just a, it's not a real baby, it's just a competition. This is called the South, and I think we got to tell them the truth. And the line to, to these poor women for, for years, and it's about time to tell women the truth, and the sooner the better. And that's my feeling on it, and I would hope to, you know, as a school board too, get a hold of the bill and, uh, talk about it, read it, and see if you can pass it here, Mark.
Appreciate chat. I guess as a reminder, um, because this item is not on the agenda, we're unable to discuss it at the board, uh, tonight. But, um, Dr. Klingensmith, I think we're weak landing on showing the video.
I can't, if you'll let me just, I've got it queued up. Are you going to be glad to do that?
I, I watched it online.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to you.
No, I, I think, I mean, I guess from my perspective, uh, we know about it. It sounds like several of us have probably watched it before, so, um, I'm, I'm good with, with moving on and just understanding that it is, it is a, a matter of curriculum, so I believe we'll, we'll turn that over to the curriculum department.
Yeah, definitely sure.
All right. Well, I appreciate the, uh, patron comments, and, um, I guess we will move on to the superintendent reports.
Okay, uh, first one up we have is our food service, uh, report, uh, Ted Linky, uh, director of food service. And Lucy's going to pull up your program.
Thank you.
I'm having to do everything one-handed because this thing's going to top over. Sorry.
We do apologize for people watching online because, uh, we have a little technical difficulties, but Lucy's doing great.
Oh, my gosh.
Lucy's doing double duty.
Yeah.
I don't, I can't get it to come up. There.
Okay, we're good. I forget. I'm Deb Linky, food service director. Welcome to the day, board members. I haven't presented in front of you guys before, so, um, let's see. Um, I kind of went back to my old boring presentation because you guys were new, and I wanted to explain a little bit more about how food service works with the funding and the programs. It'll be quick, I promise. Um, so the national, we operate the national school lunch program. Something that ever asked you, you know, what program we run, that's it right there. Um, we have a free and reduced price meal applications policy that we can, that any parent in the district can fill out and qualify, um, financially, if they do qualify. Um, for breakfast, we serve five buildings, and we scatter light out to Alpha and High Roads. Um, same with lunch, we serve five buildings, and we scatter light at the same. And we also provide afternoon after-school snacks for latchkey and three of our elementary buildings. And then summer programs and some other, uh, type of areas that we offer. Here's our stats. This year, we're serving around seven fifty for breakfast every single day, and seventeen eighty-nine is our average for lunch every day. Um, celebrations this year, we had two health inspections per building, and we received a hundred percent on every single one, so we're all part of that. Our kitchens are, for the most part, spotless, so glad, we're glad we get a hundred percent of those. Um, so goals, my goal every year is to increase participation. We know that they learn, the kids learn when they eat breakfast and lunch, so we might just have that as a goal of the year. This year I added one, learn AI, because it's just interesting to me, and I'm finding out that there's some parts of AI that can help me with my job, so I kind of am trying to make that goal this year and start learning some of that. Because I am old school. And then my next goal is fully staffed our building, and I'm on my way, we're almost there. And this is just that regular, remember the old pyramid they used to have, they switched it over this, and it's been working fine for, you know, probably thirteen years now. Um, so this is the, the list of the nutritional requirements, and every student in the district has to take three of the five lists, op, offers. Um, just so you know, these are the recalcory requirements that we have. We do have sodium requirements, we do have, this year coming up, we have really sugar requirements, and I don't, I didn't list them out for you because I still need to learn myself up. Um, so we do have requirements that we have to, regulations we have to go by when we need to use. Um, so we serve food based on all the commodity foods that are distributed on a monthly basis, so every month a big truck comes and delivers our food from the market for our kids. Um, we also operate on reimbursements from the government, and then income from our paid students. That's how we make our money. Uh, reimbursement rates, so this is new this year, this is a little, this is increased actually from last year. So just for the new folks out there, and the people in that, um, we have food, the, um, full-paid students, every full-paid student that goes through the line, we receive thirty-nine cents for them, and fifty-one cents for their lunch, thirty-nine for breakfast. Um, for every reduced-priced student that goes through the line, that's the amount the district receives. And then for every free student, we have two eighty-four we get for breakfast and four fifty-two for lunch. Those are the, this coming year, reimbursement rates, sorry. Um, and then this is my lunch heroes. These are the guys that make that happen every day. These are the real true ones that, that make it, feed all the kids in the district to make it happen for me every single day. And I think high school is smoothly made because look how close they are. They're all snuggled up there.
That's awesome.
And so I'd just like to thank all of them for dying with us, and then I just get so much support from the principals, assistant principals, our central office, so I wanted to thank them for all their support. We have easy days, and we have not-so-weaky days, so they're supportive when we do have those days. What questions do you guys have?
But the, the good news is we get to keep, uh, meal prices the same.
I didn't mention that. That is, that should be in the celebrations. We're going to do that for our community to share. And I also didn't, didn't remember to mention the new building, or to, we'll talk about that on the other one.
Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for, um, the food you provide for us.
Okay, very well.
I was going to point that out. The one thing I didn't have up there was that you provide a couple meals to the Board of Education every month, which we really appreciate.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next, uh, program evaluation is, uh, activities and athletics. So we have our activities director, uh, Andy Arment, after the league his first year. Uh, that's done a great job, so we're excited to hear the report.
Right, so, um, I think we had a very successful year, uh, with our activities and athletics. Um, so I didn't list all of them. Um, they are in the report, but it made my report like sixteen pages long, and I didn't think you wanted me to sit here and read all of those. So, um, we did successfully add two new spring sports, one being boys volleyball and the other being stunts. Um, we did host districts for boys volleyball in the inaugural season. We also hosted a stunt tournament at the end of the season, which ended up being kind of the, the culminating tournament for every team that was there. Um, because they just, they don't have a state tournament yet, so, um, I guess we're going to try to keep that going while, until Michigan gets on board and, uh, starts off. So, uh, we saw three conference championships, two district championships, and then we also hosted one state semifinal game, uh, there in Snow. So, uh, a big year for, for athletics and activities, and, uh, it was a lot of fun. We're looking forward to, to another good year this year. Um, again, didn't list all the different student athlete honors because it was, it was a long, long list. Uh, we did have over twenty college signings this year, um, and then we had nineteen school records set, so that was, uh, it was pretty amazing. Uh, here's a couple pictures from, from some of our championships. Um, you've got the, the boys' baseball winning, uh, conference right there, uh, the district football championship, and then the, um, district wrestling championship. So some of our, our other successes, um, staffing, we were able to retain all our head coaches except for one. Um, he, he retired late, so all but one, so I, I felt like that was pretty good. Uh, we did have three coaches named GAC North Coaches of the Year. Uh, that's Jason Cooper in football, Clayton Olson in wrestling, and Eric Burley of Maxwell. Uh, and Eric, uh, actually got Coach of the Year two years in a row, so that's a pretty good contribution there. We had two coaches surpass, uh, some big milestones, and Chad Berry and Mark Thomas both surpassed the hundred career wins. Um, I know, uh, I think Chris Burley's coming up on two hundred here before too long. I don't know if it'll be next year, maybe the following, I don't know. It's coming soon, uh, which is a pretty big deal, so, um, I think we were able to keep some of those, uh, coaches around, uh, by offering different opportunities, paying for them to go to coaching clinics. Um, and then I think the, the new percentage-based salary schedule for, for coaching is going to help retain coaches as well. Uh, but overall, I, I felt like we did, did really well this year. As far as, uh, Booster Club and community, community engagement, Booster Club supports, uh, a ton of our student athletes in different programs. They, uh, hosted athletic appreciation dinners this year for each season. Uh, that was something new that, that was added this year. Um, we are looking at continuing that again next year. Um, that's something where they work with me on trying to schedule a night where we don't have a whole lot going on, where they can try to get as many of these student athletes as possible. But, uh, those were, were a pretty good success, um, and I think we're looking forward to doing that again. Yeah, they just keep supporting all of our student athletes. I know they met Tuesday this week, and we're already looking to purchase more things for our students, so, um, it's a, it's been a good group for us to have. So there's some of our successes. Uh, we've got basketball boys doing some community service. I'm looking for, for more of that out of our student athletes and organizations this year. Um, that's going to be one of our, our goals, is to, to get out and, and to help the community more. Again, we've got our career wins up there. Uh, we've got the, the football team down at, uh, West Plains. And like the community support there was, was pretty amazing. Um, and then the, the girls' basketball team, um, after their win at, uh, Washington.
Right.
Uh, so some goals for next year. So up here I put the different CSIP goals that, that you guys have, that I'm going to be trying to, to focus on, uh, for the athletic and activities department. So when it comes to grades and attendance, those are both very important to activities as well. Um, so not only will I be looking at those as far as meeting mission requirements, but I'm going to just focus on meeting those A-plus requirements as well. Um, working with, uh, counselors and, and the secretaries up front, and, and really focusing on getting these, these kids to meet those goals. Uh, because that's just another opportunity for them. Whether they can play at the next level or not, it's still a, a way for them to further their education. Uh, the other one is, uh, school culture and climate, uh, retaining staff, uh, but not only that, um, I already kind of hit on that a little bit, but I want to also get more kids involved. Uh, when it comes to school culture and climate, getting kids involved, um, increasing participation, that's a big thing when it comes to athletics and activities. Uh, so I'm, I really want to see some of those numbers starting to increase in some of the home programs. Some are doing really well. Others just need a little boost. We need a little support, and, um, we're going to work to get them. The last one, I've got parent community engagement. Um, I felt like we've, we've taken some steps forward when it comes to our social media presence. Um, but, uh, we're also working on, um, getting one specific communication app for all of our activities, where our parents don't have to have four different apps for each, you know, a different app for each, different, uh, activity that they're involved in. So getting that kind of, um, anchored down into one spot is, is a goal. And, um, and then also I'll go over all of this again at our parent meeting, uh, which we're gonna, we're gonna have, uh, during open house, so we'll schedule that day and hopefully get as many as we can and go through all of this with them as well. Any questions? And then I've got more specific details on the, on the report, if you'd like to check that out.
Really appreciate how you wrote down some CSIP goals and made it fit what you did. I just, really, really proud of you. And show you what all you did.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations on a great first year, too.
Thank you, sir.
I noticed the grade is a little different this year.
Between that and having, you know, four kids, having three girls, so, as they get older, I don't know. I, I don't think I'm going to be able to fight that.
That's awesome. Great job, Coach. Thanks.
So our next one is our federal program. And typically we do this, uh, presentation in May, uh, but, uh, federal programs, the federal, this is just giving you an update on where the federal money is and how it's coming in. Uh, but we've had some delays and some things. We've kind of been waiting to get more information as, as information comes down. And this still isn't fully complete, so, but I need to give you a presentation on this, so, uh, here's kind of where we are. So, uh, just funds we receive is Title One, Title Two, and Title Four. Uh, Title One is to help the, um, it's really for low-income students to help, that are struggling to close the, uh, achievement gaps. So it's for student achievement for low-income students is what the funding's based off of. And, uh, the top row here is our allocations over the last five years, so we had six hundred forty-three thousand, and that has declined, uh, almost every year, uh, down to four hundred sixty-one. Uh, we're expecting a little bit of decline this year, but not that much. And, uh, so this is going to result in us having to reduce some positions. Uh, we just can't, we can only spend what we have. Uh, so what we've, uh, been able to do is carry money over from Title Two and other, other things to help cover those costs. But, uh, as costs go down, as revenue comes in less, we have to do less. So, so we'll be working through that with the staff and plan, but the forecast for that is having less people serve those students. And so currently Title One has, uh, two instructional support teachers at Dana Moon, three at Rebecca Moon, and, and two at Warrior Ridge. Those people work directly with students that are struggling the most. Uh, they're pulled out of small groups and everything. Uh, we're required to spend more money in the buildings that have higher friend base lunch, which is Rebecca Moon, so that's why they have three, and they just have two. Uh, as you recall, we reduced two positions a couple years ago from that as well. Uh, so it just says funding decreases. We'll have to just completely fill that budget. Uh, the other items that are kind of this homeless, uh, than non-public schools, uh, so, uh, forty-five thousand goes to our, uh, other non-public schools. Uh, this year is, uh, Holy Rosary, Sagacious, and, uh, third school, I'm forgetting off the top of my head, but we had a third, third one that, uh, received a few dollars. So, uh, the Title One money follows the kid, and so that's why that goes there. Uh, the Title Two, this is basically professional development, uh, for staff, and, uh, we're seeing about the same amount of revenue for there, uh, the last few years. This year that money is frozen currently. Uh, this funds our literacy coach, which works with all teachers to help teach reading at elementary level. Um, and, uh, right now, we don't know if that money's going to come to us or not. I'm hopeful that it will. Uh, I believe that the federal government said it's just under review at this point, and they aren't going to release the funds until they know it's spent. Hopefully they see that we're actually using it to help kids learn to read, uh, and, and help teachers be better teachers that might have come through. Uh, but we'll just kind of see how that plays out. Uh, but right now, this is the unknown part of what our allocations will be or how much we'll get. But we do have this person under contract, so we are required to still employ this person throughout the year, so we're not like, not paying them still. So we'll have our literacy coach regardless of we get funds or not, uh, this year. Uh, and we can transfer money. So what's covered us in the past, we look like in twenty, twenty-one, we, we banked some money, uh, knowing that we might see some reductions. And so we've been able to be under, live below our means in Title Two and transfer over to Title One to help carry those over balance of budgets. Uh, but now, last year, we actually spent more in Title Two than we received, and so, uh, we're just not able to do that. So the balances have helped carry us over, or the fund balances are pretty much going away in the, in the Title, uh, rounds. So, uh, the Title Four, uh, this is, uh, this really did improve students' academics, uh, and we've used it to pay for campus most years. You can see we've really been under budget for this, and this has been kind of our highly fun Title One, fun Title Two, focused on, on reading, particularly the elementary levels in focus. Uh, and, and this year we received forty-four thousand. We'll be transferring one hundred percent of those funds to Title One this year. And we'll have to pay for campus out of district funds, uh, to make, to make this work. But that's kind of how the federal funds are, are shaping up right now. And our goal is to, uh, maintain a balanced budget and then also increase student achievement by some areas. That's kind of how that lays out. Questions on that one? All right, then our next thing is just CSIP. This is really just to, uh, it's new school year officially. Uh, we're in July. It's kind of hit our goals, and what we're working on is kind of review more of that and that.
Hang on, I got that.
So this will be officially what we report on in January as our official report, but this we just got highlights here of what we know at this point. Oh, the third, Kitty College was our third school that got, uh, to, link on that. Okay, uh, so, uh, we scroll down a little bit. Lucy, we'll kind of go quickly through these just to hit our goals again, so we have a fresh inner mind. Uh, the first one, oh, there we go. Uh, the first one is, I'm sure we can all read this, is, uh, is going to be on, uh, student achievement, I believe. Though it's, yeah, A-plus on that. So we have forty-two students that have received an A-plus at graduation this year, so that'll be our baseline number to see that in, increase over time. Uh, so we'll, we'll be working on that at the high school level. Scroll on that a little bit. Lucy? And then our next one, uh, was, uh, students on grade level, reading grade level. We're at seventy-two percent right now. Our goal's seventy-five. Uh, so we want to, uh, definitely see that increase, but it is moving in the right direction, so we are seeing some gains. One of the big things we're using this year is the University of Florida's Literacy Institute, uh, U-Fly, and so we've got a lot of teachers signed up for that, along with the letters training that's coming from the state. Those of all are very, very positive, and, and so our literacy coach and the coaching of a lot of our teachers on this, and it's, we're seeing a lot of positive movement in this direction. So we're, we're excited to see that go, and PD's going to be happening this summer on a lot of those, so we'll have some professional development for teachers, and so they'll, they'll help us continue to go forward. That one. Uh, then our third goal was, let's see, uh, so math scores, so math scores will be coming out, uh, shortly, uh, next month or so, so we'll get some baseline data on that one shortly, see where we're at.
Am I on the wrong one? Sorry.
Uh, so behavior, uh, so of course we want to decrease the number of students that, um, that get referrals, uh, so we'll be working on that this year as well. We'll look at our baseline data from this year. This will be something I'll be with the principals to talk quarterly about. This is always a major focus, is just student behavior and how we maintain student behavior. And one of the things in the, that was just signed yesterday in Centerville, uh, sixty-eight, uh, that was just the governor just signed is that suspension will no longer hurt us in, in attendance. So, um, because that's not something we've ever really held back on here, and so it's really hurt our attendance, and so, uh, now this should help our attendance if we are, uh, going to continue to discipline students. We won't be penalized for that. So I'm, I'm, I think that's a positive thing, in my opinion. Uh, so we'll, we'll still be holding kids accountable and doing what we can to have good behaviors. Uh, so, and we'll keep on going down. Okay, so safety training, so we'll be having that, I was just meeting with Officer Pink, uh, earlier today about some of those trainings, so we're, we're well on our way with that. So appreciate the support of our local police and all the due force. Uh, it's a great partnership we have. Uh, let's see here. So increase student mental health. Uh, so we'll continue to work with that. We have, uh, an actual agreement with. we have an actual agreement with companies to help provide some support, mental health support for families, heard students here, so we'll continue to work hard on mental health goals there, and we'll have some baseline data on that that we'll be measuring as well. Let's see, so this is retaining staff, and we had one of our best years ever this year retaining staff, I think, being able to get a little bit of a raise, that, that made a big difference, but one of the big things, I think, is our focus on hiring local people that have graduated here and live here, that's made a big, big impact on retention, so hats off to our HR department, Dr. Ross is not here, but they've worked really hard on this, so it's, it's paying off. Let's see, raise pay, so we'll hopefully be able to do that, hopefully revenue comes in. Then our last one here, for school culture, let's see, so our survey data, so we'll be monitoring that again, that's gonna be something we talked quarterly with our administrators about, this is survey data now, how things are going, internal. So then our next one, keep scrolling down. Okay, this is again survey data that we'll be monitoring as well.
Remind me when the next survey is coming out?
Well, a lot of this is internal, so we, our district wide one goes out in March, and so we send out one every quarter to our staff, I, to say that, that after the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter, people are pretty much gone, so we don't do that, but that's data, but we look at beginning of the year data based off the end of the third quarter data of last year, so it's measured that quarterly with our staff, but we do a full survey around the first of March with all of our parents. Okay, all right, so we've got parent community engagement, we will, let's see here, again, measurement, parent satisfaction surveys, we've got the March data there, so increased partnerships between businesses, we're talking really a lot about our apprenticeship program at the high school, I was at a chamber of commerce meeting last week, and, and there was a lot of interest with that, and potential opportunities for the chambers to support businesses, to support students to come in to do that, so I think we're getting some good partnerships, and some good groundwork being laid through the chamber of commerce to provide our students real-world experiences with local businesses, to hopefully our students will stay here and work here, and then start businesses here, and run our own economy here, or maybe go to college and come back, but, so there is definitely some momentum going with this, so I'm excited to kind of see where this goes this year, I think a lot of opportunity, the, the apprenticeship program at the high school, we've got a dedicated person there for that, so that point of contact is really gonna be valuable, so I think, I think we're gonna see some big gains in that area over the next two or three years.
At least I hope so.
I think, so Lucy, or you have a one more? Oh, facilities, basically, these are just building our school, we work great, and if you've not driven out there, they've got storm shelter, one of the walls, it's pretty fun to see that come together, so moving right along. I think the fund balance is above twenty-five percent, we're gonna get that, we'll talk about that in our financial report here in a minute, that's good. And, so the preschool program, that's all about building a new school, so as long as that all comes together, we should hit all our facilities. So that's just CSIP, just kind of bringing it to your attention, I know it's kind of long to go through that, but appreciate that.
Can I go back to the very first one?
Yep.
And I know Mr. Arnett said, Coach said something about his, on one of his goals to go back to the A-plus program? You said we had forty-six students this year?
Forty-two, I believe.
Forty-two, so that's a little less than the twenty percent of the graduating class, that's our goal was twenty percent?
Yeah, two.
I, myself personally, I mean, I'm just saying from my own parental guidance on my own, I made both of my kids good, and the reason you do that, so I think, one thing we must do, and I'm not saying the counselors need more work to do, but when they, when they attack that freshman night, I know we do a lot with our freshman orientations and things like that, let's don't talk to the kids, let's talk to the parents. I mean, as a parent, if I could convince them psychologically that A plus, B plus, C plus, D, those four things right there equals a better chance of success, by God, the parents are gonna chip in and help out making sure that kid, and my point was simply this, what if my kid goes to Mizzou and hates it? Now he comes back, you're still going to school, you're going to stuff, you know what I mean? Because you can still use that A-plus to go back, you know? Plus, it looks good on the transcript, you know? Plus, I think Mizzou actually chipped in a little bit of money for both of my kids.
Yes, all the state schools give something, Truman does, I know.
Yeah, so they chipped in a little extra money just because, you know, if you ask them, say, hey, I had this, and, I mean, that's pretty impressive, ninety-five percent attendance, which is a must, I mean, we all know, that was what I did my master's thesis on, was attendance equals success, if you don't show up, you can't, you know? Almost every business owner out there will tell you that, they just want somebody to show up. Two-point-five GPA is, I think it's one of the problems that we're having is proficient in EOCs, but at the same time, if my kid's going to college and I'm really pushing as a freshman to a parent, we're gonna make sure that that's gonna be done, or something else too. Fifty hours to two hundred, that's just giving back, you know? Kids need to give back, and that's not, over four years, we have so, we have so many opportunities for that to happen too, so, and good situation, that's, that's expected. I just say, that's one area, if we focus on that a lot, and really attack that with the parents, then we're gonna see better culture all around, everywhere, so I, I think that's a good one, so, I'm done, my soapbox is over. That was pretty good. Any other questions? Excuse me, any other questions, guys?
Basically, staying out of trouble, no suspensions, suspension, you're automatically out, you know, there's definitely, so you look at your discipline.
And there is, and there, and there's always a protest avenue, like a situation where if a kid loses the attendance because of life-altering experience, there's always a protest that, and then there's a board that you can go in front of and they, they make that appeal process, because there's always, because there's always that extenuating circumstance that it could happen.
Seriously.
Okay, I know we've been talking a lot, but this is my last one, I promise, and I'll go quick through this, since we've talked a lot about this at the end of June, but just kind of show you where we are. So this year today, our revenues came in slightly more than what we had budgeted compared to last year, we were slightly under what we had budgeted, and expenses were slightly under what we had budgeted, but closer to the hundred percent we were working for. Fund balances are very similar, thirty-eight point three versus thirty-eight point zero, very, very close, and so when we look at our chart here, I'm actually kind of surprised, this is not normal, how they all ended up, the last three years ended up being almost exactly the same, I mean, that's really not normal, but, but that's, wasn't the goal, so, but honestly, I just felt like I got lucky, but it, but it did work out, so, I'll take it.
Way to hold the line.
Right, 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 exactly, so, so, you know, compared where we were, you know, five, six years ago, we're much, much better in financial shape, and it's looking, looking much better, so, so we did end up with a thirty-eight, that's, that, those are the three years combined, the orange is this year compared to the blue two years ago. So, so just dollars, how much did we receive total, I was gonna kind of hit the, the total amounts, this year, we received forty-two million, or forty-seven million, almost forty-eight million, compared to forty-three million, most of that increase was from the state, which is double payment, our, our intellectual education, and then local funds are, are up as well. So then we saw, in, in expenses, we spent about forty-one million, and we had about thirty-seven million for last year, so, we did get raises, you know, we did, which has helped with retention, so that's what we're supposed to do.
And I think, and I think you really hit on that a little nicely while ago too, and I think that's part of it, that there's a trust factor, that they know that if we have it, we're gonna, we're gonna share it, it's not that we're hiding it, even transparency's perfect, you know, I think in years past, that was part of the problem that we had between our staff and our board, even when I was teaching back years ago, that, you know, I think there was a lot of concern that, well, if they have it, they've not given it to us, no, that's not the way it's working, I promise you now that I'm on this side, I see it, they know that if we have it, we give it to them, and I think that helped a lot this year too.
Yeah, we're not, we're not vague, we didn't want to look below our means in this budget.
No, and you guys, and we have done that, and you guys have, I know, for now, seeing it on this side, you guys have done and done, thank you for all the work that you do, much appreciated.
So Fund IV, this is our capital projects fund, about one-point-eight billion, I'd like to get that up to about two million, because we're gonna have to replace a football field at some point, it's about a million dollars, I'd like to keep a million dollars in the bank, so we're getting closer to that goal, considering we did replace a football field a couple of years ago, so we're gonna, we're right on track for that, that's looking good financially. That bond issue, so we have some, the revenue and expenses on that, so right now, our revenue we received is about thirty million, we spent about four billion, we have almost twenty-six million remaining, so the contingency, this is the five-hundred thousand that's built in, what we spent so far is fourteen million, fourteen thousand, we have about four-hundred-and-eighty-five left, now we do have change orders tonight to approve, that's gonna bring that down to about four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, off the top of my head, and that is still looking good, so we're still, we're doing great, and now that we're out of the ground, I'm really expecting less issues, you know, near the ground, you don't know what's gonna get, now that we've moved it up, we're, it's looking good, and that is the financial report.
Any questions or comments around the financial report? I appreciate all those updates, quite a bit to learn at the end of the year. We will move on to the next item of business, which is the consent agenda, the standard bills, along with several renewal contracts. Any questions or comments around consent agenda? How to entertain a motion?
I approve the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Ricky, a second. Excuse me, a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor, signify by say a aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Consent agenda passes. Moving on to old business, so first item of old business is photography contract.
Yes, so we have, last month, we wanted to discuss photography and our contract with Wagner Photography, and just so everyone kind of knows the story on this, and we did this out last February, we've got some great bids to act, from Wagner, very, great pricing, and when pricing went out in the fall, we discovered that the pricing was incorrect, that went out to parents, after some discussion with Wagner, we've all agreed that that was wrong, Wagner has issued refunds, or not refunds, but I guess some refunds to parents, so the difference in what the, the package that they purchased and what were charged, they did get some refunds for that. The spring pictures, the pricing was correct, but then at graduation, the pricing was again incorrect on that, and so that's kind of where we are at this point, and Mr. Wagner's here to answer any questions, if we would like to have him come talk, or talk to him directly, so I'll just turn it over to you.
All right, are there questions from the board or Mr. Wagner? If so, we can call him forward, if not. Mr. Wagner, do you have anything prepared to?
I do, I do, or I'm happy to speak, or...
Yeah, I'd say come on up, if there's questions, I guess we can address those as they, as they come up.
Absolutely, thank you. Chip, I have a little handout, could I?
Yeah.
Care to incorporate? Thanks. Thank you, okay. My name is Chip Wagner, I am the second generation owner of Wagner Portrait Group, so for those of you who don't know us, and a couple of people here, it's nice to see you, and I don't know a few folks, so it's nice to be here, thank you for having me. We are a local company based in St. Louis, I grew up in St. Peters, we worked in this community for fifteen years, I was thinking back, I think we were super tense, so we've got some longevity here. I, I come to you first with a thank you for that business opportunity, we've had some great relationships here, and it's, it's meant a lot to us, we're, we're a family company, so building those relationships is paramount, but I also come to you here with an apology, and quite frankly, I've been in this business for nineteen years, we haven't had this happen, I've done this before, to stand in front of the school board, and it's embarrassing, and we took ownership of it, we take full responsibility for this, we don't bid things and switch them, and so I'm gonna get into a little bit of the background of that as well, so you understand, really, my goal here, when we're done, is for you to understand how we've addressed this, how we're gonna move forward hopefully together, and, and that's the consideration I asked from you all, because, you know, part of the relationship, I think, is working things out together, we, we have a track record in the district of, of having a positive relationship, and it's, you know, it's come to the point where we need to address some things, and so that's why I'm here, because it's important, so, just kind of a quick background, as Greg said, as Dr. Klingon Smith said, excuse me, price discrepancy versus what we bid with what we offered to patrons, some was correct, some was not, so in the, what was not had to do with a couple of things with yearbooks, and certainly the fall portraits, and then ended with graduation portraits, so really, what we have done here is taken our, kind of our market standard rate and then inserted what the district asked of us, or asked of all the vendors a year and a half ago, and that did not get translated through, so how we resolved it was identifying what the, the issues were, we reached out, I guess you had heard that we'd reached out to community members who were, who were charged incorrectly, issued those refunds, so we could move forward. We did have some very good feedback, which I did share with, with Dr. Klingon Smith after we did that outreach, of people who said, hey, thank you for recognizing this, and we appreciate it, that type of honesty, and so how do we move forward? I think that's the biggest thing we asked, right? I sent Dr. Klingon Smith, and if you'd like to see it, we can put it up, we have everything built for next year, it is done, it is solidified, it is labeled, we have built in a system of checks and balances to be sure that when your photos are ready to go online, or ready to go to, you know, it could be Warrior Ridge or high school or wherever, we've got this assigned to you, okay? So I won't go much deeper into, I can go as deep as you'd like to know about it, however, you know, just what took place, there was some internal confusion, I mean, I, I worked very hard after we had some in-depth conversations on graduation, and then it didn't work, right? So then, as a business owner, as a company, we've got to peel back and understand why that is, and make some appropriate changes, which we have, so, again, I'm happy to share that, but really, where do we go from here? I think that's the biggest point, is I wanted to assure you of how we are looking at things and how we've sat down with our team to build these out, and then I wanted to just reassure our, our commitment moving forward, I mean, we are, you have a choice in who you use, I mean, there are several companies that bid, we, again, we have some history here, we've got relationships here, but that doesn't matter if we're not doing the job that we say we're gonna do, so that's why I'm here to articulate, to voice that to you all, so I'm happy to answer questions about it, going backward, going forward, et cetera.
One of the questions I get, Chip, about the elementary school yearbooks, I totally understand if you add a page to that, as long as you add cost to the books, but I didn't understand how the books would be more expensive if we were ordering more, because it's usually cheaper to print a larger quantity, right?
It's a great question, so it's the old press printing, which I think we, we were familiar with back in our working day, versus now digital printing, so it actually flips now, okay, so when we're printing more, that machine, it used to be an economy scale with those big press prints, that if you put a thousand yearbooks through versus five hundred, you've got a, a better price for there, the press is diff, or the prepress now is different than when you're using that old, sorry, digital is different than when you're using the press, so there is, it's really a flip-flop, and so that's why.
So a book could cost twice as much because when you order a larger quantity?
It could, it could, but it's all, you know, to go back, it's all, it's a grid, it's pages and quantities, and where does that land, so that's kind of why there's, there's some differences.
Good question.
Hi, Chip, I appreciate you coming and apologizing today, I will say that this has been frustrating for us, not because usually we're dealing with security taxpayer dollars, but this is kind of signing up our parents to pay a certain price, and initially, myself and another mom were like, wait, like, this is the price that the parents pay? And we were really excited, and so when we saw that that wasn't the case when we went to order, it was, it was upsetting, because, like I said, this is something that we think the parents pay. I appreciate you coming in and apologizing and giving us your bid. One question I have is, would you provide better clarity for our yearbook teams about One question I have is, would you provide better clarity for our yearbook teams about whenever we do go to order yearbooks? That they know exactly which ones, what they should be building in order to get the best price?
We will, and that was, uh, something when we met in person, that we went over. The spec that was in the bid is actually not the realistic spec that the schools have been used to. And so, there is a, uh, there's pricing in, and I said it was online, and I've got it with me here, of page increases and decreases. And, you know, there's some difference, obviously, in enrollment with your three buildings here. And so, we were, what the bid actually says also is that the school can pick what they wanna do, and then we'll use that pricing to move it to where it should be. So, our goal, uh, where we're gonna do this year is talk to all three yearbook, it's basically your secretaries, so Erin, Melissa, and Jessica, and say, okay, do you want to be, do you want to be here at, you know, thirty-two pages, forty-eight pages, et cetera? Here's your estimated quantity, and then agree on that with Dr. Klingon Smith, so there's no ambiguity, I guess.
And then the next question, which is, oh, um, whenever you go to order pictures, are you placing the, the packages that we bid on still in additional options? Or is it going to be in like the options that you see pretty clearly?
That's a great question. So, um, we have two different systems on how we go to e-commerce, so one is more for the senior and the high school side. So, we've actually highlighted those with your logo. Um, so I mean, the W's on there, very clear, and again, we can pull those up. On the school picture and the spring, um, side, we can't do it exactly that way. So, it's in a section that says additional packages, and that's something that, um, kinda have, have our hands tied a little bit on coding it, but that's how we handle these things with other districts as well. So, we've got our standard, and then we have a section that's called additional packages, and that's for those, but, in essence.
Greg, maybe that's something that needs to be communicated in parents' from buildings, you know, before they order, you could tell them, you can show them what.
And that's what we did on spring pictures?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, spring pictures, we did that, but it was in the, because, uh, I think with elementary school, they have a newsletter that goes out, and it was part of it now.
Okay. Okay.
One follow-up to that, we hadn't been able to logo that section in the past, we are now. So, you will, guys will see that, so they might, they'll see a section that says additional packages with the specific district logo, so in your case, the W, you can probably extend that.
I guess, Greg, maybe as a, just a reminder for the board, what our, I guess our current contract is right off the top?
Sure, uh, the contract was a three-year agreement, so we just finished year one, essentially that, but, uh, does say, and then we can, uh, break contract in writing by the end of the year. So, you have no threat, no notice, uh, to break contract.
Greg?
Any other questions?
Questions, comments on, thanks for your time, but?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for having me, and, uh, if we work together, we'll move forward better.
Appreciate the time. Yeah, I mean, is there, do we wanna continue to discuss photography business?
So, if we, if we don't take any action tonight, we just stay with the contract, is that correct? It's only if we want to go a different direction that we need to make a motion, is that?
Yeah, that would be correct, yeah. Any further questions?
Is there a way to get, um, the link to purchase pictures sent to the board, so that all board members can see it whenever it comes out?
I don't, I don't get that sent to me, is that possible, Chip, the, the, the link sent?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because that was one of the other things, is like, okay, well, I saw it because I'm a parent, but like, Rich doesn't see it because he didn't have a kid in the school. And then same for graduation photos, I didn't have anyone graduate, we were all in photos, but we weren't graduating.
Send one to review before it goes out.
I was just gonna say, well, when we're doing our process, we can do it, send it to you, so you can.
And, right, then you could share.
Yeah, a lot of times, you know, it just goes out, never seen, and that's a, a problem.
And then, I'm sorry, I have one more.
Sure.
Are the prices that we bid still the pre-purchase, like the?
Reorder.
Yeah, pre-order.
Yeah, so, great question, so, yes, they're, they're pre-order, um, which means that's like kind of the traditional way of ordering. Um, there is a price difference in if you wait to see the photo or online. It's similar because, you know, again, we've got an economy of scale, and we can put in Warrior Ridge and print four hundred packages at once versus literally one at a time. You know, somebody could order today from a year ago, so, yeah, so there's a difference, everybody's pretty, it's clear, um, when we go to parent. When we send out all our marketing, it goes out on pre-ordering, says, encourages them to pre-order for best prices, free shipping, so, so free incentives, things like that.
Should we know what that pricing is after?
Um, I can provide that too, but it's, it's just, I kinda use the term marketing standard, it's just our standard that we have for, for all of our clients, basically. You had to share both.
And I'll say from a personal standpoint too, that since I'm proud of being the only one that's actually worked personally with photographers, uh, picture days, there's two days that coaches hate. Uniform hanging out, and, and, and photography day. And, uh, I always had a great experience with this company, uh, 'cause I mean, we put them in some situations, meet us at the golf course at three-thirty or whatever, I mean, uh, or, hey, we're in a hurry because we got a game tonight, that thing. And you guys have always been very good to work with, I, for my experience, and, uh, and, uh, so, for you to come tonight and explain everything that went on this past, kudos, you did a great job, and I appreciate your time that you did that for us. Hopefully, uh, it all works out better, and it seems like, like you said, transparency and keeping us all in the loop is, that's a great point that, um, sprays brought up. None of us were in a loop a lot of times, but.
Yeah, I just wanted you to know we have a plan, like, I'm sure if you're just like, sorry, like, yeah, sorry, Hannah, you're what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I'd agree. I appreciate the plan forethought and to, uh, to address some of the concerns, because there's definitely been some concerns brought up. Any further questions or conversation? Okay. We will move on to policy approvals. Uh, we just have two that were, I believe, discussed, um, not discussed, but brought up at the last meeting.
Yeah, last meeting, we had some questions about, uh, the purchasing one that talked about the, uh, the boycotting companies, uh, or not doing business with, uh, companies that boycott Israel, um, in, in more than a hundred thousand dollars. Little research that state law, apparently, that's why that's there. So, even if we don't include it in our policies, we have, still have to do this, uh, under state law. Uh, the other one, uh, the other policies from the Israeli Ethics Commission, they recommend that we approve this every two years, we do it every year, just to not forget to do it every two years. And there's no, there's no change in the policy, it's just, we just have to re-improve that we are ethical. Is there a school board? Yeah.
We have to make our reports to the, they have reports on the Israeli Ethics Commission every year, so.
Are there any questions or conversation around the two policies up for approval? I'll take a motion to approve the policies as presented.
I'll second.
Alright.
I have discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, was there any further discussion or questions?
I'd still like to admit number thirteen from the policy, the purchasing policy, DJF, National Graduating. Um, that is the part that pertains to, um, Israel. Like, like, I'm sorry. Um, I, so there is a portion that pertains to Israel, it states that we cannot do business with, um, any company who, who we're doing business with for more than a hundred thousand, that they are boycotting the state of Israel. And there was discussion about it last time, I know it is, they've always thought to do it, but I don't like small government in putting things into our, it, it doesn't pertain to us. I'm a Warren County representative, and like, those are our students. I would suggest omitting that, but again, one of seven.
And I, I hear you because I think local control is important too, but like Greg said, it's state law, so we have to abide by it whether we include it in our local policy or not. And I don't know that we've ever, that we would even ever run into it, you know?
Just, just our construction projects, so like, we're building a new building.
Right.
Our, our companies that we work with do have, they have on their forms, this little checkbox, they all check that they're not boycotting.
Okay.
Uh, so, we do have that on there, it is state law, so we do have, so really, either way, doesn't really matter. So, because it's law, if we leave it off there, nothing happens? We still have to follow the law, it just wouldn't be in our, written in our policy.
Other discussion?
I think that's why it needs to be put in there, because it's just. Yeah, we're just trying to.
They always try to keep us updated with all the new morus and stuff, right? Which is the reason we pay them, belong to that organization.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented on the floor. I guess if there's a desire to change that motion, we need to amend it, we need a motion to amend.
I think we should vote, I think we won't on one, I think we should vote on one with us too. And if it is voted down, then we do something different.
We can do that too. Other discussion? Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve both policies as presented. So, we'll go to vote, um, all those in favor of approval? We can do a roll call.
Just to be very clear.
We can do a roll call, vote on those, so, we will start with Stephanie.
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Tiana?
Aye.
Rich? Carolyn? Keith?
Aye.
Motion passes for two. To approve all policies.
Unless you would vote.
Oh, me.
Okay.
I just break that.
Okay. Okay. You're in charge.
Alright, so those policies are approved as presented. Uh, moving on to new business. We have a change order, a couple of change orders, just number two, I guess.
Yeah, it's, uh, we compiled all the change orders together here, so, um, uh, I've kinda walked through those. It's a total of sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars in change orders from, uh, basically getting out of the ground of, uh, the new building. Uh, the first one, uh, we hit a water line, uh, that bowed up, and a really strange phenomenon. Uh, so I appreciate Karen Rock splitting the cost with that, uh, with this, because it really was, who, who knows why that happened or how it happened. Uh, but water line just bowed up and through the ground, and as they were cutting the ground, just hit it. So, uh, we do apologize for all the people that we turned their water off online. We've done that a couple of times now, so hopefully we've done it now. Uh, but anyway, um, moving on, uh, we had some backfill for the sidewalks that we just needed more of. Um, uh, the fire department's requesting another exit sign in the gym, so, so they just want another exit sign in there, so that's very small, a quarter of fifty-nine dollars. Uh, but the big cost was when we were doing the retaining wall, we ran into the plastic soil and had to keep digging to get past that, so that just added, added to that cost. Uh, so those are our change orders, and, um, but now that we're out of the ground, hopefully we have a lot less.
Alright, any questions, comments on change orders presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the change orders as presented.
Hannah?
I'll second.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, motion and a second on the floor to approve the change orders as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Change orders are approved. Next, seven point two on the, uh, new business is earthwork.
Right, so, but this came up at our last construction meeting, we were discussing about, uh, because they're getting ready to pull the equipment out, the, the, the earthwork equipment off-site, and then be done with that work. Uh, one of the questions that we came up with is, well, we might be doing an alternate, one of the alternates sooner than later. Uh, the alternates are those, those last classrooms on the main that we haven't, uh, approved to do yet. And because we're seeing a set value going up, which means we might be able to borrow more, which means we might be able to do it even as soon as September. Uh, so, kinda just through some discussion, we thought, well, what if we could just do the earthwork now? Uh, and then even ten years from now, if we would need to build up, that would at least save us that time. So, because we would just basically, we would do the earthwork, then all we'd have to do is pour concrete go up. Uh, so if we get all that earthwork done, get the rocks down, get all the cement plates done, uh, we would.
Under drains.
The under drains, so we would save time in the future, because if we have students in there, we're gonna want this project to go as quickly as possible. Uh, and so, it kinda made sense to me that we'd go ahead and do, I think we'll be able to afford that in, in our funding capacity now. It's not a huge expense, uh, compared to, you know, thirty-five million dollars or, or whatever, but, you know, we're looking at two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to do both of them for the alternates. And so all we have to do is the earthwork, and all, uh, worst-case scenario, we take it out of our fund form, which we have about one point eight million remaining there. So, so we're, we're in good shape, I think, to do that, and to me, it just kinda makes sense for future projects to, to just be able to move quickly on that project, whatever.
If we decide, when, once we know our, um, assessed evaluation for sure and all of that, and if we decide we can't build either one of those, or we can only go with one of those alternates, um, right now. The other part that they've prepared can just be overlaid with topsoil temporarily until we can build it. But it just makes a lot of sense, it made a lot of sense when we were talking about it in the meeting.
It's important, like.
That, right, that if we can prepare that now, Karen Rock's on site, they can do it without moving their stuff and then having to move it back, that would raise the cost of the work for sure. So, it, it made sense to me, for sure.
Well, I have a, I have a philosophy, I mean, since you.
Oh, gosh, Rich, stop.
I got some question I have from a contract perspective, so it's not part of the current contract, or we just add to that, or do we need a new contract, how's that all work?
Right, so this, uh, was not, so they bid the whole project, uh, and what we approved was just the, um, base bid. And so we would need to get another contract for this piece of, and what we're hoping is that they'll honor or be very close to what they originally bid on. Uh, and then they'll, since they've already bid it, they've been through the little bid, and they have opportunity to still have that.
We would rebid, but if we go out to?
Not necessarily rebid, because we've already bid it once, and if we already bid it, we can just work a little bit, if they're willing to honor that bid, then we're, we're good. Uh, now, if they're not willing to, we might have a little bit of an issue, but hopefully we'll honor that.
Yeah, and I think Ryan may have talked to, Ryan Hill from TSS, they have talked to him already, but he, he ran the numbers for us to get us a ballpark figure on that, so.
And so then we'd have another contract for that work, that we would have to approve that.
Right.
Okay. I guess that's my response.
Right.
Parts of the contract goes. Greg?
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, ready for a motion?
I move to approve proceeding with the earthwork for alternates one and two.
Who'd you get, Lucy?
I got Rich.
Okay.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to, um, to approve proceeding with the dirt work for alternates one and two of the new elementary school. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Alright, otherwise we will take a vote, all those in favor of proceeding, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Alright, we will proceed with continuing the new bid. Alright. Uh, next, most, our next item on the agenda is policy first read, so, my turn. These are just brought to our attention for voting on at the next meeting, so if we don't vote on them, we'll just bring them to our attention. I think they create as a little, a little highlight of what they are in general, and then it'll be up to us as board members to make sure that we read through those thoroughly before we, before we vote on those next month.
Right, and I'm not seeing anything in here that's gonna change our day-to-day too much, other than we have to have a written communication plan, that we have to have approved, which right lines what we're talking about in our life work session, so.
It's like that anyway.
Uh, it's, it's perfect timing, really, uh, but everything else is pretty much not gonna change a whole lot of what we do, uh, talks about, like, we have to have a gift program, we have one, so. Uh, there's just some state laws that have changed, updates.
Alright. We will, uh, we will commit to reading through those before our next scheduled monthly meeting. Moving on to miscellaneous startup with celebrations, anybody have anything to celebrate this month? month?
You guys. Well, the only, the only thing I was gonna say was, I think summer school ended today?
Yep, last year, and I heard good things about that.
I was invited last week to go up to the high school P E class and give a lesson on golf. I was really using it to find employees. That was how I opened my statement, was anybody looking for a job, see me about working at the golf course. But we gave them a lesson, we spent about an hour, hour and a half with them, teaching them some things about golf, and then the coaches had all set up an outside golf course for them, and they all got the chance to play nine holes of simulated golf with real golf clubs and footballs, and they really enjoyed it, and I, then the coaches all came out today and played the golf at the end of the school day to celebrate the good school year, so it was fun, so. Kids really enjoyed it, and I really enjoyed it, reminded me how much I miss teaching some of this, fun.
I always like to celebrate the end of the county fair week, which was last week, but it is, honestly, it's really fun to see a lot of the FFA projects, and forage projects, well, kind of culmination of all the kids' hard work throughout the year, whether it's livestock, or crafts, or whatever it may be, it's always fun to, fun to see that and see people get together as a community, so I like to, like to point that, point that out, but it is a busy week for our family, so it's always nice when it's over, too.
I like the way everybody shared, even though I didn't go out there, I felt like I was there every day, because everybody shared their things on social media, and really cool following the kids and the parents, and all the good things going on, you know?
The livestock team leaders did a really good job of putting out information about each show each day.
I know there's a lot of time that goes into that from even some of our staff and teachers and so forth like that, and all the sponsors, and all the forage clubs and stuff, because, I mean, even this year with the parade, I thought the parade was fantastic. I think there's a huge crowd, I think lots of people participated in it, I just think the whole thing, and the Queen sells, the Queen campaign, it seemed like they had a great time, all had positive to say, and it was just fun to watch, like you said, you said it right, community, that's one thing that we, reason why we all live here is because we love our communities.
All right. Thank you for those. Always good to point out good things going on around, around the district. So, workshop topics, I don't believe we have anything for this month, unless anyone can think of anything, otherwise we will forego a workshop beginning July. I don't see anybody opposed to that, so, all right? We will move on to the set the next regular scheduled meeting.
I make a motion to set the next regulated Board of Education meeting for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I'll second.
Stephanie.
What's?
Motion and a second to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next regular meeting is set for August fourteenth, a closed session.
I make a motion for the next closed Board of Education meeting to immediately proceed the open meeting on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephanie. Motion and a second for the closed session to immediately proceed our next regularly scheduled meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Last motion of the night.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rich, and thank you, Keith. Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.